All right. This special meeting for the Annapolis City Council on Monday, September the 24th, will be called to order at 7:10 PM. At this time, would everyone willing and able, please stand for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Lord, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come here together and to discuss the people's business. As we contemplate the difficult decisions we have ahead of us, please let us have patience, wisdom, to understand each other's point of view, and accept that, and accept your will. Thank you for all the blessings you've given this city over the years, and please give us the strength to move forward together. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the rolls?
Yes, sir. Mayor Pantalides.
Present.
Alderman Budge.
Here.
Alderman Peon.
Present.
Alderwoman Pindell Charles.
Present.
Alderwoman Finlayson.
Present.
Alderman Littman. Alderman Kirby.
Present.
Alderman Pfeiffer.
Present.
Alderman Arnett.
And Murray.
Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the first item?
Mr. Mayor, first on the agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda and to remove 04816 for the city manager on first reader.
Do you want to move?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I propose that we amend the agenda to postpone the MRE presentation. Till the end of the meeting.
Till the end of the meeting. Any seconds?
If you want to put up with this. The next council meeting.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a ceremonial item, donation of recycling bins from the Annapolis Green Incorporated, funding source of grant from Keep America Beautiful.
Please.
To turn it on. We are fortunate enough to obtain a grant from Keep America Beautiful, since we are an affiliate of Keep America Beautiful, and tonight we want to present to you ceremoniously 22 of those bins that will go in our parks, in our city parks. So right now, there are only six recycling bins in our 41 parks. So this will add tremendously. And I just want you to know that the retail value of the bins is a little over $11,000.
Oh, wow.
And I should have said who I am, for the record. Elvia Thompson, from Annapolis Green, and co-founder of Enforcement. So we'd just like to do a little photo op.
Sure. Well, thank you so much for financial help and for providing us. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
The next item on the agenda is the MRE Declaration of War. On the mainland.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, fellow citizens, friend and foe. Eighteen tugs and many beers ago, our fathers brought forth on this continent, a new nation conceived in liberty and inebriation, and dedicated to the sole proposition that all Eastport citizens are a little different than our Annapolis counterparts, or perhaps a lot different. 2016 marks the 19th year of the annual slaughter across the water, and each year since its inception, the Maritime Republic of Eastport has carried on the tradition of declaring tug-of-war on the city of Annapolis, and this year shall be no different. We stand before you this evening with pride in our maritime and culinary heritage, our unique shops, and our quirky lifestyles, which sets us apart from the Annapolis proper, proving that time and time again, the actions of the Maryland State Highway Administration all those years ago are no match for the good citizens of the peninsula. We are proof that what makes for a great life is a good hat, a good dog, and a good boat, but we don't need to bring the Oyster Boys into this just yet. Mr. Mayor, by the authority vested in me, as the Minister of War for the Maritime Republic of Eastport, and approval from the Revolutionary Council, I challenge you and the Annapolis proper to the 19th Annual Slaughter Across the Water, scheduled for Saturday, November 5th, 2016, at the crack of noon. What say you?
I say the challenge is accepted, and I think we should add one more tug to it. I know you do seven tugs. It should be the Annapolis side, Annapolis Alderman versus the Eastport Alderman.
That challenge is accepted.
We will make Annapolis great again.
That's a little unfair to an athlete.
We accept, and I will be down there to help the Annapolis side pull, so.
Fantastic. We look forward to it another year.
Thank you. Did something just happen? Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by the Historic Preservation Commission regarding a particular landmarking matter.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Kennedy. I'm currently the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, and I'm joined this evening with Roberto Leiner, from the Historic Preservation Division, Department of Planning, and Mr. Lawrence Harris, who's the Chairman of the Board of the Community Health Center at Pearl, Inc. Thank you for having us here. I won't be as entertaining as the last item, but I think we're equally important. We are here to summarize the request that was submitted to the HPC by the Community Health Center at Pearl for designation as a local landmark in the city of Annapolis. The electronic copies of the materials that I'm about to summarize for you were in your packets and are on the website of the City Council Agenda. I also, as I do every time I appear before you, disclose that my husband is the sitting Alderman from Ward 1, Mr. Joe Budge. All right. The Community Health Center at Pearl designation as an Annapolis landmark. The CHPC was founded in 1936. Its primary mission was to provide maternity care for the local African-American community, which was not available through the regular healthcare delivery service systems in Anarundel County at that time. The healthcare center was originally housed in the Asbury Methodist Church, and later at the Mount Olive Methodist personage, as funds were raised to construct a dedicated building to this healthcare and community centerpiece. 1944 marked the beginning of the fundraising efforts. The groundbreaking for this building occurred on June 30th, 1946. The cornerstone was laid May 16th, 1948, and the new building was completed and dedicated on June 5th, 1949. Construction of this building was primarily done by the community and by volunteers. Some of the oral history that we've researched indicates that on one Saturday, the community gathered and stuckoed the entire building in a single day. Additional volunteer activities included laying the floors at night by volunteers, because it was the only time that they had to do the project. In addition to maternity care, by the time the center was opened, services include also x-rays for medical care, dental work, and vaccination of children. By 1999, the Community Health Center at Pearl had logged in its single year over 4,000 walk-in patients, had immunized over 3,000 children, had over 1,700 in-home visits to the community, and all of these services were provided free of charge to the community. The Community Health Center also housed the Healthy Start Program and HIV/AIDS testing at the time. But it was clear to the community the facility needed a major overhaul and expansion. This picture is of the expanded building, which was completed in 2012. This renovation cost over $650,000, was raised from private, public, and corporate donations, and the expanded facility not only served the existing African-American community, but was able to provide services to the emerging and equally important Annapolis Latino community. In order to be designated as a landmark in the city of Annapolis, a resource must meet one of four national standards that are provided to us by the National Park Service. It only has to meet one in order to qualify. The Community Health Center at Pearl actually qualifies on two criteria. The first being, it is clearly associated with events that have had a significant contribution to the broad patterns of our Annapolis history. Secondly, it is clearly associated with the lives of significant persons in that history. The broad patterns of history that the Community Health Center at Pearl embodies are numerous, and this is simply an extract of some of the research you'll find in your packets. First of all, it shows the broad pattern of the change of the surrounding land around the city proper from farmland into suburbs. Secondly, it's a clear reflection that in the early part of the 20th century, public health was becoming a societal priority. Not the logo, the tagline of the health center was "Every child has a right to be born a healthy child." It also shows the broad patterns of history of both the independence and the prosperity of the African-American community in Annapolis in the 20th century. The funds that were raised to build the original building in 1936 through 1949 were completely funded by the African-American community. And finally, it shows the broad patterns of history as we have changed in the second half of the 20th century and early into the 21st century of the growing impact of the Hispanic community in Annapolis. The second criteria that the Community Health Center qualifies for is under persons of significance. There are four that have been identified in the history research. The first would be Mr. Walter S. Mills. He was an educator and principal at Pearl Elementary School for over 46 years. He led the effort to establish the center and did the incorporation of it into a nonprofit. He was born in 1909 in St. Mary's County and had a bachelor's degree from Hampton Institute in Virginia. In addition to all the good works he did for this community, he was also the primary sewer against the Anarundel County Board of Education in 1939, which established the principle of equal pay for equal work for African-American principals and teachers, and he was aided in that lawsuit by Thurgood Marshall. The second member of the community that is in the designation is the Reverend John T. Chambers, Sr. He was the President of the Pearl PTA when the Community Health Center at Pearl was founded. So he was basically the partner of Mr. Mills. He served as the first administrator of the Community Health Center at Pearl. He was by profession a preacher mainly on the eastern shore, but he also ran a well-known barber shop here in Annapolis, contributing to the economic vitality of his community. He was also the President of the Anarundel County Federation of PTAs. He was President of the Anarundel County Chapter of the NAACP, and he served on the Board of Citizens Planning and Housing Association for the city of Annapolis. The third individual is James Marshand. He was born in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, and was an experienced carpenter and building contractor who worked throughout the east, including at the Tuskegee Institute down south, Newport News in Virginia, and in Westchester, New York. He became the vocational and industrial arts teacher at Wiley H. Bates High School when he moved to Annapolis. He was an original board member of the Community Health Center at Pearl and served as its first treasurer. It was he who actually supervised the construction of the building on Drew Street. He recruited students who he was teaching at Wiley Bates, who were also returning from World War II, and provided assistance and hand-on experience for these individuals. In addition, he was the Vice President of the Anarundel County Chapter of the NAACP, and he was also the Scout Master and Chairman of the South Shore District Boy Scouts. He died unexpectedly in 1954. Finally, the fourth individual that research indicates was associated with this is France America Pindell. He was on the Board of the CHPC from 1984 to 1998, and afterwards became the main leader in the renovation project we described earlier. He also served in World War II. He founded a local construction business, was a trustee at Mount Olive African Methodist Episcopal Church for over 50 years. He served on the Pearl PTA, on the Annapolis Civil Service Board, the Stanton Bates Alumni Scholarship Association, and was the campaign manager of the only African-American who became mayor of the city of Annapolis. The process in which a resource goes through to be designated a landmark is rigorous. Everything you have in your packet was submitted to the HPC in written form. We then reviewed it, analyzed it, and had a public hearing on September 26th, 2016. The items included that were sent to us was the statement of significance, the historical narrative, the chain of title, an architectural description, and the property deed and boundaries. Once the application was received, we had to employ certain standards of review. The HPC considered the historical context of this property, its significance in terms of its integrity, its historical character, and its cultural significance to the community. We assessed it on the nationally agreed-upon aspects of integrity, which include location, setting, design, materials, workmanship, feeling, and association. The HPC has now completed its work. We voted on September 22nd of 2016 to unanimously forward to you a recommendation that this property be landmarked as a local landmark for the city of Annapolis. We forward this recommendation, I guess officially, to you this evening. There is a bill on the first reader tonight, which is the implementation of this recommendation. It is R. 3316. It is introduced by Alderwoman Pindell Charles and Mayor Pantalides. That concludes the HPC presentation. Any questions?
Yes. I'd like to. I'd like to thank you all. I am so overwhelmed. About the outpouring of support for War III and the residents of Pearl. I am so grateful and humbled to represent such wonderful people. My dad worked tirelessly in the community, as well as many others. Mr. Mills was the champion in Pearl. Nothing got passed without Mr. Mills's blessing. Mr. Mills called Pearl Elementary, Pearl University, and that's how he ran the school. Reverend Chambers was a stalwart. In fact, his son was the only African-American mayor of this city. I did not know Mr. Marshand, but I had heard a lot about him. But I am just overwhelmed with gratitude that you all thought highly enough of us to seek this designation. Mr. Harris has been a stalwart in this whole process, as well as in our community. He followed Mr. Mills in this process. We have some wonderful, wonderful people in War III and in Pearl. I can't tell you how wonderful they are. I'm a product of that community. Everything that I do and say is as a result of all the people in the community of Pearl from which I grew up 62 years ago, and I am forever grateful for the support that I've been given. I'm forever humbled by this. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say it's been an honor working with the entire community. This came from the community. We're just grateful they wanted us to take a look, and it has been an education for all of us. We've learned an enormous amount about our history that I didn't know, and it's wonderful as far as I'm concerned. And I'll tell you all who are up there, we've had a lot of meetings, there've been a lot of tears at these meetings, and it's truly been a joy to do what we were doing in the last six months. So thank you.
Thank you all very much. Anyone else? Thank you for the presentation. Mr. City Attorney, would you? Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, next is a ceremonial item, and it is for a citation to be conferred upon the Annapolis Summer Theater for its 50th anniversary.
If the representatives from the Summit Garden Theater would join me at the front, please. A very special thing to do today, you know, serving as mayor, you get to see a lot of anniversaries of different groups. I was at Asbury United Methodist Church for their 100th anniversary, been the 25th, the 50th, and a lot of other ones. We reach a lot of milestones in the community. What we have here today with the Summit Garden Theater and their 50th year, for all the great shows, giving people opportunity for talent, is a wonderful thing. So we have a citation from myself and all the members on the City Council honoring 50 years of their service. On behalf of the citizens of the city of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you this City Council Citation. In recognition of the Annapolis Summit Garden Theater's contribution to the arts, entertainment, and quality of life in the city of Annapolis, we acknowledge that since its exception in 1966, the Summit Garden Theater was a true community project that helped revitalize Annapolis' historic waterfront and the conversion of 143 Compromised Street, to a community theater restored a historic landmark, fostered a cultural center, Old Town Harbor, and inaugurated Annapolis' first summertime theater. For five decades, with the help of an ever-evolving core of engineers, the Annapolis Summit Garden Theater has strived to entertain the greater Annapolis community with live music theater, drawing several thousand local visitors and locals each year to the city dock. We applaud the theater for its ongoing effort and contributions to boost the local economy, engaging thousands of residents and volunteer service, and enrich the cultural fabric of Annapolis, and we honor you tonight for your 50th anniversary, given under our hand and the great seal of the city of Annapolis, signed by myself and all the members of the Council. Congratulations. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, next on the agenda is petitions, reports, and communications, the first of which would be reports by committees.
Is there any other person that would like to present a report? Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you. The Public Safety Committee met on Monday, October 17th, here in Council Chambers. Our first order of business was to create a special committee of the Council. That committee is being charged with investigating and clarifying concerns that have been raised by the community against our police chief. That committee is being chaired by Alderman Peon from War II. He'll be joined by two community leaders, as well as two other attorneys, so that once and for all, we can put the concerns to rest. We can also, the committee is also charged with coming up with a process, so that when future concerns are raised, there's an automatic process that we can go through for clarification. We had several people, over a dozen, I believe, who came out in support of a resolution, in support of Chief Priestup, and that resolution is on the agenda for first reader tonight. We had an update on the 2017, actually, it's 2016, recommendations from the Caucus of African-American Leaders. Back in March, we discussed 16 recommendations, and so at the last meeting, we updated those recommendations, many of which have already been implemented. We discussed moving forward, the police chief discussed with us, moving forward on a policy of community policing that will help to connect our police to our communities much more closely, so that there is not only a better exchange of information, but a better level of support for everyone. And we heard an update on crime in the city, which, believe it or not, is getting better each day. Our next meeting is scheduled for November 21st, here in Council Chambers at 5 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Peon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Economic Matters Committee met on October the 17th, and we reviewed three items that will be before this body. The first was the appointment, a reappointment of Robert Warden to the Annapolis Heritage Commission. The second was 03716, lease of city property for the Fall Boat Show of 2020. And the last was Ordinance 3916, lease of city property for the Spring 2020 Boat Show. We agreed to recommend unanimously unanimous approval of each and every one of these. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Kirby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Housing, Human Welfare, and Housing and Community Development Committees met on October 18th. Business before the committee was the appointment of Mr. John Dillon to the Housing Authority City of Annapolis Board. The committee did recommend favorably, after a very spirited 45-minute vesting, to Mr. Dillon, was doing tons of talking. And we have not had a candidate before us as a committee to go to the Housing Authority Board that collectively, we felt truly fit the purposes of being a board member. Mr. Dillon's well-qualified. As you know, and the debate was only due to the fact that we had to get him before the committee. So we recommended favorably to the Council to put Mr. Dillon on the Board. He has tons of expertise to land to the current Board. Another piece of legislation, 041-16, dealing with composable waste, will be before us tonight on second reader. At that point, I think we will have an amendment offered, and Alderman Littman's absence. And that piece of legislation will come later. We also recommended favorably for that. Our next meeting will be on November 15th, right here in Council Chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Next, Mr. Mayor, our comments from the general public.
During comments by the general public, you may speak on anything that's not already scheduled for a public hearing. First three people signed up to speak are Ricardo Pardisco, the Honorable Robert Duckworth, and Deborah Gundry. Come up to the front, state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Ricardo Pardisco.
My name is Ricardo Paradiso, I'm at 110 Virginia Avenue, Edgewater Beach, Maryland. Good evening, Mayor Pendelides, city council members, and citizens of Annapolis. Recently, I returned from Marsala, Sicily, where I had the pleasure of participating in that city's commemoration of the 15th anniversary of 9/11. Marsala has a monument erected to memorize those who were lost that terrible day. I had the privilege of presenting proclamations and expressions of gratitude from Governor Hogan, of course, the mayor, and Robert Duckworth, who is the clerk of the Circuit Court in Anaroma County. The ceremony included Dr. Alberto DiGiorolamo, Mayor of Marsala, as well as other numerous local dignitaries. I was honored to be a part of that occasion. Upon my return to Maryland, I presented Marsala's response to Secretary of State John Robinsmith, who accepted Mayor DiGiorolamo's statement of thanks on behalf of the Governor Hogan. I'm here tonight to present Mayor Pendelides, Mr. Duckworth, with similar declarations from mayor and citizens of Marsala. In this regard, I want to call to your attention that some years ago, I drafted a bill to formally recognize the cities of Annapolis and Marsala as part of a sister-city program. That bill was submitted to the Annapolis City Council and was signed by the late Mayor Dean Johnson. But unfortunately, formal acknowledgement never came to fruition. While in Marsala, I had a conversation with Mayor DiGiorolamo about revisiting this idea, and he expressed his interest in a future dialogue. I believe the time is right and hope that the mayor and city council will review and take action to forge a link between these two cities, which have so much in common. Thank you, Mayor and city council, for allowing me to address you tonight. I have the presentations from the documents from Mayor DiGiorolamo and the city of Marsala. Okay. I can bring them there or bring them here, whatever.
Can we get the photographer in the room to take a picture?
Yes, sir. Good evening, council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Deborah Gundry, and I'm here to ask you to pass the ordinance 0-45-16, which adds on to the city code 20.30.020, to allow county residents who have a disability eligibility for the moderately priced dwelling unit. This legislation would help me achieve my dream of owning my own home in Annapolis. I have a master's degree in social work and qualify for the program based on my income. I grew up in the Annapolis area, going to West Annapolis Elementary School, Bates Middle School, and I graduated from Annapolis High School in 2005. I was even lucky enough to do my internship for my master's program at Annapolis Middle School in the year 2013 to 2014. I consider Annapolis my home and would really love to be able to stay here. I currently live with my parents, so that I might afford a down payment on my very own home. This legislation would not only help me, however, but other members of the county who have a disability, and therefore, even when professionals don't earn the same amount of money as our able-bodied counterparts and/or are infills that themselves don't lend to high salaries. Allowing the inclusivity of the disabled members of the society to enrich their lives by being homeowners not only gives them dignity, but is beneficial for the community as a whole, widening the perspective and perceptions of community life. The moderately priced dwelling program is a wonderful and instrumental in allowing average hard-working folks to afford to live in the city of Annapolis. Thank you very much, and I hope you all have a wonderful evening and will consider this.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else from the public who would like to address the council? Please come forward, now is your opportunity. Seeing no motion in the chambers, I declare comments by the general public closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, next on the agenda is your regularly-scheduled update.
There's a couple of things I want to update the public on that's been going on. The first is that the city's hired their Hispanic Relations Liaison, Hispanic-Latino Liaison. Roxana Rodriguez, we conducted interviews with five people, and we met with her, and she'll be reporting to the city manager on Monday, the 31st. She has a passion for community service, a great work ethic, she's someone that's known in the community well. She currently owns with her husband the Caliente Grill. She's fluent in writing and speaking English and Spanish, along with having an extensive knowledge of the public school system, education, and opportunities for student achievements, and ESOL classes for adults. She's going to coordinate meetings between existing organizations, churches, businesses, local governments, to address the need of the community. That is now the second-largest in the state of Maryland. In addition to that, we've been having numerous meetings to deal with HACA, Housing Authority of the City of Annapolis, and the residents, which I like to say are our residents as well. We've met with their board, we've talked to them about ways the city can help and assist them. We also have reached out on a federal level, we sent messages to McColsky Carden, Senator Sar, or Congressman Sarbanes, we actually had a phone call with someone in Carden's office recently. We realized it's something we can't do alone, and we're reaching out to them as well. We also had somebody come down from Baltimore, and we talked to them with how they're going to have to deal with the repaying of the money. And that's why I think Mr. Dillon's appointment is so aptly timed to come forward. I've done many things with appointing new members on the board that I think will serve it well. The other thing we have going on is we have a press conference tomorrow for the Annapolis Maritime Museum, and what's happening there is we're doing a 20-year lease, and they're going to be taking over the park for us with private money to management. Many of you may know they run the one over in Eastport and do a phenomenal job, they've been a great steward with taxpayers' properties, so we're very excited about that. If anyone wants to join us, it's at 1:00 PM on 7314 Edgewater Road. And the last thing I want to say, it's coming up on a piece of legislation, but I see some people in the audience from the uptown at Murray Hill, about an amendment Alderman Budg and I have been working on to help them. And the reason I'm saying this beforehand is it's an example of what government does to work. So, when you look in the downtown area, people in the mixed-use zoning were required to have two parking spaces per household. And the reason they did that was because the city's had policies in the past where you put up as much as you want and everyone can park on the street. That's not really fair to anybody that lives downtown in the neighborhood. So, when they came to me and said they wanted to get rid of that restriction and allow people in the MX zoning to park on the street, my initial response was no. Everybody had to have two spots, that's what you were allowed to have, and we weren't going to change that. Then it was brought to my attention that when they went to buy their properties, they were told they could park on the street. And in fact, city staff told them they could park on the street and gave them their passes for a year, only to pull it away from them a year later. And the reason I bring this up as an example is I found about this through my open-door policy, and I have it the first Tuesday of the month. So, if those people wanted to come in to see me and talk with me, I probably wouldn't have sponsored the amendment or the legislation. So, I just wanted to let people know, we're here, we're here to listen, I see a big crowd tonight, I appreciate everyone coming out. And that concludes my update from the mayor. Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, next on the agenda are three appointments to the various boards and commissions. One is the reappointment of Derek Myers to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Second is the reappointment of Robert Warden to the Annapolis Heritage Commission. And the third one is the appointment, as we've discussed tonight and last time, at the last city council meeting of John Dillon to the Housing Authority of the City of Annapolis.
Is there a motion to approve the reappointment of Derek Myers to the Board of Appeals?
Move. Approval for all three.
Let me restate that, is there a move to approve all three?
Move, so move.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, next is the consent agenda, which we do at each meeting. There are various first readers and second readers on the, on the agenda, which I won't read specifically, but the council has them all before them.
Is there any other person who would wish to remove something from the consent agenda? Alderman Arnett?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Due to the magnitude of the amounts of money, I think it would be appropriate to have an independent vote on 043-16 and 044-16. I fully support these, but I don't, I think they're of a magnitude that really should be voted independently, not on a consent calendar. And I'm, I would also move that we remove the harbor line for South Annapolis Yachting Center. Clearly, there's a lot of last-minute discussion going on there, and I think we need to take that up independently.
Okay. All right. So, 033-16, 034-16, 043-16, 044-16 have all been removed.
33 is the Chester Marina, I don't think that's a problem.
I apologize, just 34. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, our mayor Pendelides.
Aye.
Alderman Budg.
Aye.
Alderman Peon.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Kirby.
Aye.
Alderman Spicer.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, we're at public hearings. First one is a public hearing that was continued at the last meeting, having to do with the city's absentee ballot application ordinance.
Which was the first public hearing?
The absentee ballot application.
Nobody had signed up in advance to speak, if you would like to come forward and address the council on the subject, now is your opportunity. Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on 036-16 closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Next, Mr. Mayor, is 042-16 regarding the requirement of bonding of city employees.
Nobody had signed up in advance to speak, if you would like to come forward, now is your opportunity. Seeing no motion in the chambers, I declare the public hearing on 042-16 closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, next on the agenda is a public hearing regarding the ordinance to approve the sale of the Eisenhower Golf Course located in Anaroma County.
The first three people signed up to speak are Cliff Anderson, Linda Bowman, and Deborah Andrew. If you could state your name and address for the record, please. Either one is fine. Could you push the button to turn the green light on? Thank you, sir.
My name's Cliff Anderson, I've been a resident of Savannah Park for 43 years. I've also been a part-time employee of Eisenhower for 18 years. So, I sit before you as a representative for myself, as well as hundreds of people that have been talking to me about the golf course for many years. I won't bore you with, or try to repeat what you already know, I know you've been briefed on the conditions of Eisenhower, so suffice to say that a major investment is needed. What I would like to talk to you about is that it's a great layout, it's a great location, and it draws largely from the Annapolis and points south, as well as other 15 to 20 mile radiuses. In my experience at the golf course, it has served the breadth of demographics, large youth, youth programs, ladies and men programs, but the course is in trouble. What I've noticed over the years is a declining midweek clientele of senior citizens, and especially a decline in customers on Saturdays and Sundays, where we no longer offer the go-to course. People aren't willing to spend the kind of money to play the course that we have to offer right now. So, I guess I'm here to urge the council to approve the sale. It's based on what I've read in the newspapers, it appears that the county has the wherewithal to make the improvements and give Eisenhower a chance to, to reach its potential. Thank you.
My name is Deborah Andrew, I live at 18 East Lake Drive, Annapolis, Maryland. I am the president of the 18-hole Ladies League, and I represent approximately 75 golfers in that league, which is probably one of the largest in the area. The woman sitting beside me is the president of the nine-holders, and they have about 75 members there also. There's also two other leagues there that are men's leagues, I don't know how many are in them, but it's quite a number of us. But Eisenhower isn't just about leagues, and it's not about just public play. Eisenhower is also a place where it's hosted numerous youth camps. The high schools use it for not only their play, but practice, and also the Boys and Girls Club of Annapolis. So, it's, plays a big part in the community. Also, there are many groups who host charitable events there. We ourselves just hosted one recently, an invitational, and we raised over $2,000 for the, a local SPCA here in Annapolis. So, it is a great venue, but it is in need of a lot of repairs. And without a functioning clubhouse, and the erosion problems, and of course, you know, all the things that you go on and on, we will lose these types of people that are using this event. I think it is a great asset, not only to Annapolis City, but to Anaroma County, and the people that use it here. So, the truth is, it's in need of major renovation, and we're asking the city to approve the sale to the county who is willing and able to make the course the showpiece that it used to be. Thank you very much.
My name is Linda Bowman, and I live at 110 Moore Road in Arnold, Maryland. As Deborah said, I am the president, the current president, of the Ladies Nine-Hole League. We do have 75 members. We, up until last year, had two members that were, one was 92 and one was 93. I can't tell you how much fun it is to, to be able to play with ladies that age and have them as a role model for myself. It was, it was wonderful, and I hope to follow in their footsteps. I think that it affords us the opportunity for the people that live in this area to get out. get out and have recreation. I think that Eisenhower, being one of two golf courses in the county, it has the wherewithal to be the prime location for the Baltimore, Washington, and Annapolis area, and also, with changes, upgrades, and so forth, has the capability of being the premier golf course in the county. One of the things that we do as an organization is we go to other golf courses throughout the county and throughout the state, over on the eastern shore and so forth. These are called SWAG events. It's the Suburban Women's Golf Association. It is currently somewhat embarrassing to go to these other golf courses where these women host wonderful events for us, because they have the capacity to do that. We don't at Eisenhower. We don't currently have a snack bar that's big enough to prepare the food on-site that we would need to serve our people that come to these events. I think that, I have observed over the past five years, that maintenance and improvements have been deferred, and I think because of the unpleasant conditions for lady golfers, we're losing people. So I would like to request that you pass this ordinance, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you. The next three people, Alderman, Lacy.
Those are my ladies.
Would you like to ask their membership to stand? I think there's...
I guess if everyone in support of the city selling it to the golf course would like to stand, seems like you have quite a contingency.
I was just asking about the lady golfers.
Oh, just the lady golfers. Mostly ladies. One second, we're going to get through the people on the list, then you can make the call. The next three people signed up to speak are Kathy May, Craig Harrison, and then Liz Rubin. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Kathy May. I reside at eight-one-eight-seven Orchard Point Road, Pasadena, Maryland. I'm here today, I'm actually the SWAG chairperson at Eisenhower for Women's Nine Hole League, and outside of that, as a personal resident. I'm also a real estate broker, and been in business for over thirty years in Anaronda County. My support for the sale to the county is in the essence that, in my capacity as a SWAG chairman, I do have to go out and go to other courses, meet with other women, and I hold the events at the course. And I am in agreement that we've, I've done this now, I'm in my third year in that position, and over the course of time, we've actually had to move our events off of the course for the catering or the events afterwards. It's very weather-driven, just because there's not the facilities for it. On a sidebar, I'm very proud of our county, and one of the attractions is the recreational facilities available to people moving into the community. When people come to me and they're looking for a place to live, having the recreational space is, is a plus for the county, and so I am in strong support of the city allowing the county to come in and make the improvements necessary. Thank you.
My name is Craig Harrison, and I'm on the Board of Advisors for the Annapolis Rex and Parks. We have submitted some paperwork in front view in regards to the sale of the Eisenhower Golf Course. The board has unanimously, we've been viewing this for some time, we've seen the presentation which the county made, and we feel that we might be rushing into this a little bit before we can explore other alternatives besides the sale to the county. There are a number of golf organizations around the United States that are seeking public-private partnerships, and we think that there's quite a number of groups that would like to at least have the opportunity to come in, take a look at it, and give a proposal. If right now, there's a great deal of changes that have to be made out there, not only in management, but also in rehabilitating the clubhouse, the pathways, the fairways, and the greens. And so we'd ask, before the council makes a final decision on this, would we have the opportunity to see what we could do in maintaining and holding on to the asset for the city? Because once it's gone, that thousand acres is going to be gone forever. Thank you.
Just because I felt like I was a salmon going upstream with everybody else in here.
It's all right. Happy to have you here. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to talk on this issue? Now is your opportunity. I believe Liz was first, but yes.
Now it's on. My name's Elizabeth Rubin. I'm a resident of Annapolis. My brother is a professional golfer here in Annapolis. He gives golf lessons. And I don't often golf, but I do know the quality of Eisenhower Golf Course. It's wonderful to have this golf course here in our community, and I support the sale. Obviously, I would like to see the course sold to an organization such as the county who can improve it and keep it at its, the quality it needs to be. And to whoever it's sold, I mean, I think we need to have it be ensured that, let's not overlook that the, that the course be maintained as a golf course. I think sometimes it's, it's not included in the requirements of the real estate sale, and real estate property is turned into something else. And I believe the county will keep it as a golf course, but don't forget to include it in the contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Phil Colonna. I live at sixteen oh-one Honeysuckle Bridge Court, Annapolis, Maryland. Every day in my life, for the last twenty years, I look out my back window onto the eighteenth fairway at Eisenhower Golf Course. It is a huge part of my life. I'm not here to talk to you about the aesthetics. I'm not here to talk to you about all the great things it'll do for the children, because it will. The first T program is growing exponentially every year, and it's introducing people into a wonderful sport that they can play from the ages of five to ninety-five. I'm here to talk to you about money. That golf course is a gem. It's a thousand acres of pure, unadulterated parkland. I see wild turkeys. I play the course every weekend. My friend back there, the pro, is, runs it like a champ. He brings people in there as hard as he can, but everybody that's already spoke to you about this is absolutely right. I belong to a golf course in Fort Myers, Florida as well, and it is a beautiful, it's like walking into a parkland. That's what Eisenhower could be, only better. It has wild deer. They stand right next to you while you're playing. It has foxes, it has coyotes, it has all kinds of birds, ducks, and geese, and everything else. It needs to be sold to, or maintained properly. If you guys can do it, that's what I want. But if you can't do it, then give it to the county. It's sort of like taking an antique, putting it in your attic. You don't want to part with it, because it's worth something. But as it sits there, it gets worse and worse and worse. And that's what's happening to Eisenhower Golf Course. You have the opportunity to create a gem adjacent to your own city, which is going to bring revenues in here, unbelievable revenues, because of all the surrounding restaurants, the workers that they could put the work in that place. If they made it a nice place, they would need more people to maintain it. And every one of those people will pay taxes to your county, every one of them. And of course, it'll bleed over into your city. It's all about the money to me. It's not about the parklands, it's not about the geese, it's not about the deer. It's really about maintaining a piece of property that was meant to be what it is. It was given to the county that way, and since the city has taken it over, it was great at one time, but it isn't anymore. And you can't ignore that old antique in the attic. It's getting worse and worse. If you can't do it yourselves, find somebody who can. That's all I have to say about it. Just please, find somebody who can.
Well, sir, I appreciate you coming by this evening, and I'm the one who initiated the sale to the county.
Thank you.
Couple of people have brought something up. I'm writing a column in the Capitol about it, but I'll give some information beforehand. And I wish Alderman Littman was here to hear this, because he frequently at the meeting asked, well, who else will bid on it? Who else would give us money? The city's gone through a number of proposals. We had three independent people assess the property. They came in anywhere from two-point-eight to three-point-one million dollars. And everybody says, well, is there a public-private partnership? Is there a nonprofit? Is there anybody else who will give us more money? Let's not just sell to the county. And the answer to that question is no. If you want to keep it a golf course, the only person who will give you the amount of money we're asking for is Anaronda County. And I should include, the money they're giving us is open space money, which means it can never be developed into anything else. If we went to a private person and they gave us three-point-five million dollars, they could turn around and put houses on there tomorrow. So selling it to the county protects that land forever. But to that point, Alderman Littman mentions that, there was somebody who offered us more money. It's actually a lot more money. It wasn't just double or triple, it was quadruple. Somebody offered us twelve million dollars for the property. That was contingent on changing the zoning and putting up six hundred homes. So to answer the question, will somebody give you more money? Yes. Will they give you more money to keep it a golf course? Absolutely not. That's why I think the sale is so important, as everyone said. This is a vital piece of property. It generates income, and the county has money that the city doesn't. They have a stronger budget, stronger financial things, and they can invest in that course and make it what it needs to be. So I appreciate County Executive Steve Schu offering to buy it for us. I think the city can use the money, and the county will do a tremendous job running it. They run Compass Point as well. So the economy's of scale, which will benefit everybody involved in the process. So thank you for coming by.
They do. And you know, sir, I've belonged to private golf courses before, and you're saying, somebody can come in here and offer you more money? That's correct. A private entity could walk in here and say, okay, we'll give you what you want for it. But the thing about private courses is they are not making any money. Private courses are there for the members only. They're supposed to break even. That's what they're supposed to do. They make money, they've got tax implications. They don't make enough money, they've got membership implications. The only thing that's making money today in golf are public golf courses. And it's the only place you could get anybody to pay attention to the youth programs. First T, number one, okay? And then number two, there are, and here's the thing about the youth programs, you know, forty-eight percent of the new people in the youth programs are from, are people of diversity? That's almost half of the new people coming into golf. We haven't seen anything like that since Tiger Woods. And, you know, my son is, it's, that's his hero, is Tiger Woods. Okay? And he's pretty much a scratch golfer. So I appreciate you listening to me, and I appreciate the fact that you actually have some intention on doing the right thing, because, I mean, all those little animals that I was talking about, it's not that I don't care about. They do belong there, and it's nice to go out, play a nice, even, relaxing round of golf, and it would be beautiful if it had the flowers, and it had the tee boxes, and the greens, and the fairways, and even a restaurant and a grill. People would come and bring their, their, you know, their opportunities for, you know, charities, oh my, you know, somebody mentioned charities. That's the number-one producer of charity money in the, in the country is PGA. You can't, you can't ignore that. Please, people, understand, it's, you know, not because I live on the golf course, it's because I'm a golfer. Okay? It belongs, it belongs as a golf course.
Thank you. Alderman Kirby?
Sir? 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 Yes. And you, you've been living on Honeysuckle for some time?
Yes, I have. Twenty years.
Okay, and so, did you see that golf course when it was pristine?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Are you aware that the county has leased this property for some fifty years or so from the city?
Yes, I did. I know the city did a great job at one time.
Okay. And your, in your estimation, what has caused the course to just go into steady decline deployment?
I think it's an argument between the two factions, quite frankly. I think it's totally an argument between the two factions. The, the fact that, you know, we had professional golfers like Jim Thorpe and Calvin Pete and people like that play that golf course. The guy that used, that taught me how to play golf, okay, a guy I met with Joe Green, who taught me, you can't see what you can't hit, son. Okay? That's what, he's, his, his son became one of the first black-head pros of any, any huge course in the country. He went to Inverness and became, yeah, Inver, Innisbrook, sorry, in Tampa, Florida, and became a head pro down there. And Skip, his, his uncle, who used to be the pro there many years ago, still comes by and hangs around the golf course all the time. It's just a matter of arguments. They, you need to stop bickering over it. Either you do something with it, or give it to the county who's got the money to do something with it. Because if you try to sell it to a builder, and they give you twelve million dollars for it, I had to perk my own property, and I couldn't perk my property. Okay? I had to take it and perk it in another spot, and then go through this entire engineering process of doing a pump-up for my septic and everything else. Well, there's no public water sewer on that property, and that water that's down there, that pond, that's the headwaters to your reservoir. Now, if you want people's septic tanks around your headwaters to that reservoir, I suggest you, you think twice.
Well, I, I pretty much know nobody here wants it to be sold to a builder.
Please, don't do that.
So I think everybody's in total agreement that it, they want it to remain a golf course. My only problems, and I generally want to hear the public testimony on it, but I have certain issues with one hand tied behind my back right now.
That's what I'm afraid of.
To sell, because we just happen not to have capital right now.
Well, that's, that's what I'm afraid of, is that there's no, no reasonable outlook here. And you have, again, it's the antique sitting in the, you know, in that attic. I mean, yeah, it's making, it's making you a few bucks, but it could be making you lots of money if it was really taken care of. I mean, take a look at Queenstown, right across the bridge. I mean, it takes me twenty-five, thirty minutes to drive to Queenstown. They get literally fifty percent more in greens fees over there, and that's for the cheap course. They get a hundred and ten dollars for the lake, for the river course on the weekend. That, they're getting fifty-six bucks at Eisenhower, and that's only between eight and twelve on a weekend. Okay? If you developed a nice golf course over there, and I mean, it's not a matter of just a nice golf course, it's a matter of bringing the nice gem to the county, adjacent to your city. I mean, it's just a good thought, you know? It's a place, you can bring, you could drag people from all over the eastern seaboard if you had a really high-quality golf course. There's this little place in California called Pebble Beach. Okay? And there, those houses, I've been there. Those houses are modest. They're not very big houses. They're not fifty-five thousand square-foot houses. They're, they're no bigger than my house, and they're going for four, five, six million dollars. I'm not trying to raise my property value. What I'm trying to say is that you bring it, you build it, they will come. Okay? It's an old adage, and it's something that you, I mean, if you don't want it, sell it. But if you do want it, put something into it. That attic's sitting, you know, sitting there gathering dust. And that's what I'm afraid this, this beautiful piece of property is doing.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
I'm Ellen Moyer, thirty-five Eastern Avenue in Eastport. I just, I'd like to add a couple of things. Eisenhower Golf Course is properly located. It is a great asset for open space. It has been owned by the city for, that property, for fifty years, and is part of contiguous public property from Defense Highway through Crowesville. That really offers the county a real opportunity to be a central park, much as New York has in a very urban area. But I would like to share with you, and I want to want you to remember, that this, this golf course has been managed, not by the city, but by the county. Not by the city, but by the county. and Parks when this issue came up a couple of years ago. And, and so, we looked at it, sat down, looked at it financially and fiscally, in terms of prospective revenue that could come from a first-class park, golf park. And in fact, what we determined, that if the city managed it, it would generate about close to $900,000 a year in revenue. Now, this does take into account that you have to have an exciting golf shop, a clubhouse that does all kinds of interesting things and is attractive to people. But $900,000 in today's dollars, in terms of revenue into the city budget every year, is a whole lot more on a long-term basis than $3 million in terms of sale. And so, I would ask that you look very, very carefully at the asset. The city, the county wants it so bad, and can, the county has been the manager of this. You need to look at what they're also, their vision is, and what the vision could be for, for the city. There is one other aspect that needs to also to have scrutiny, and maybe laws have changed, but at one time, open space money goes to the state, comes to the county, and it is to be shared with the municipality. I don't know what percent any longer, nor do I know what the city's share is. At one time, that amount of money was over a million dollars. And so, when you're talking about fixing the golf course with open space money, is that money that the city would be entitled to have, a large portion of it, that it could use on its own? And so, I would only ask that before you go rushing into a decision, that you do some really careful, careful, in-depth economic analysis about this asset, and how it can indeed be the premier golf course in open space, that people envisioned it to be in the past, and that one time it was, remembering its heritage. Somebody mentioned Albert Green, who was the first manager there, and who went on to become the first African-American in the Golfers' Hall of Fame. So there are a lot of things that are close to this golf course and to the city. But remember, there's assumptions somehow or other that the county can do a better job. I'd say to you that in the last five years, they surely have not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Littman?
Mr. Mayor, maybe you could answer Mrs. Moyer's question, because I think we did look into the amount of open space money that we have coming to us from the county. And if I, my memory serves me correctly, it's less than 300,000? Do you know what the number is?
I believe it's 300, but the formula was 7%. So 7% of the county's open space money comes to the city. This 3.1 million would be on top of that. So we still get that money. The city hasn't purchased open space in a while, so it just sits in escrow, accumulating up and up. So this would be in addition.
Right. And it can also be used for maintenance. I think the state law changed so that maintenance is part of, not just acquisition. And, and it would be good to look into what that 7%, an accumulated 7% has been over the last decade.
And to the maintenance questions, people question the county running it. The county hires a third-party person. The reason the county hasn't made improvements in infrastructure is because they had an invested interest, and they knew this course was going to expire. So imagine yourself, would you put up 4, 5 million dollars of your own money if your lease was going to end with somebody two to three years later? So the county wasn't willing to make serious investments until then. And Mayor Moyer, if you have these $900,000 number, that's the first I've ever heard of it, and if you could provide that information, it would be helpful. But for people who say, we've been rushing this, we've been working on this for over a year, it's been in the newspaper, many discussions, so this isn't something we take lightly or rush into. We've done our research and our homework on it. Being nobody else, I declare the public hearing on 047, or 046-16 closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, next is another public hearing, 047-16, involving extending hours in Parking District 3, Murray Hill.
We have a lot of people signed up to speak today. We have 14 people, so I would ask everybody to keep it to five minutes. The first three people are Stuart Cohen, John Goodis, and Jane Huska. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Stuart Cohen. I'm a resident of the community of Murray Hill. I'm a resident of Uptown, Uptown, Southgate, and Steele. Would be able to, thank you. You would be able to see the, the layout of Uptown, which is in black here on West Street. Uptown has 30 single-family and townhouses, and the development is Zoned MX, even though it is entirely residential with all commercial use prohibited. At this time, I would like to submit additional signers to the Uptown petition, which is already in the record.
Pass it to Ms. Gaines. Thank you.
Once again, my Uptown neighbors, the other petition signers, and I are here to request equal treatment. That is, the same right to purchase special Parking District 3 parking permits. I'll try not to repeat myself, but discuss new items since the last time I presented comments to the council. Since we last presented to the council, we took our request to be treated fairly and equally to the public. Annapolis residents agreed with our request, and many actually told us it's only fair. As of tonight, with these additional petition signatures, we have submitted signatures from 204 residents of the city. Of those, and most significant to our request, 137 Murray Hill residents, including 69 of my Uptown neighbors, have signed the petition. I question the opposition of Murray Hill Residents Association President when 137 residents of his community have publicly supported the request that he is opposing. These signers include 29 from our, from our immediate neighbors on the Two Blocks of Steel, and 16 signers from Southgate. I believe these neighbors, as well as all the others from Murray Hill who all live in Zone 3, are in the best position to understand that this request will only have a negligible impact. Remember, the two most impacted streets are only restricted on weekdays from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., not weekends and evenings. During those restricted hours, I have never observed a shortage of parking spaces on the two adjacent streets to our development. Another indication of the negligible impact that this, that allowing us to buy permits would have, is in, is that in our first year of ownership, 2013 through 2014, we were allowed by the city to purchase permits. But the adjacent streets were not much used, or not much burden, even with all the construction vehicles that were still there from Bezuto. Each Uptown home has two off-street parking spaces, and most of us use those spaces 24/7. That won't dramatically change. But in July 2014, we were first told we were not allowed to purchase permits. That was the first time we knew about this issue. It was unfair to us then, it is still unfair to us today. Also new is that the Transportation Board rejected our request despite having petitions then signed by 168 city residents. I respectfully suggest the board's decision was entirely based on zoning and planning, which is not their particular area of expertise. They even introduced the concept of "city living," which is not used or defined in the city code, in which that board only seems to have applied to the Uptown development. In talking to my many neighbors who participated in the Uptown planning process, at the time, they had concerns about density, height, and street access, not as to street parking. Zoning was addressed by making Uptown MX, even though it is entirely residential. Again, parking was not the issue, as that was addressed in the Transportation and Parking Code. And in exchange for the development of Uptown, the city received an increase of $15 million in assessed property value, generating annually over $100,000 in increased property taxes. We are happy to pay our fair share, but we want to be treated equally to preserve our property values. The amendment submitted by Alderman Budge does not treat us equally. It's, instead, it taxes us more by only allowing us to purchase monthly visitor passes. In other words, we would have to pay over $400 a year for limited parking, instead of the $55 for the equal right to park in front of our own homes. That is not fair. I appreciate Alderman Budge having spent so much time with us on this problem, but his proposed solution is not acceptable to us. Instead, the mayor's proposed Amendment 3 is exactly what we urgently request, the equal right to purchase a Zone 3 parking permit. We thank him for listening to our requests and agreeing to submit this amendment. We request that all the council vote to approve the mayor's Amendment 3, and I thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is John Goodis, 75 Southgate Avenue, in the Uptown of Murray Hill Development. Last summer, I urged our neighbors to begin to address the question of what is the possible impact of admitting Uptown of Murray Hill residences into Special Residential Parking District Number 3. And as a, as an engineer, I also urged my colleagues to be data-driven in providing an answer, to try to pull this question out of an emotional trough that we seem to be trapped in. So in July, we conducted a survey of all residences in Special Residential Parking District Number 3. Now, our survey included having two sets of eyes on 100% of the residences in Special Residential Parking District Number 3, and we simply established whether they, or not, they had off-street parking. The results of that were presented on July 19th to the Transportation Committee. I'll just review the key result of that, of that study, excuse me. There are 533 residences in Special Residential Parking District Number 3. 66% of those residences have off-street parking. So I'm speaking to a point made by my colleague, and neighbor, is there is only minor demand for off-street parking, particularly adjacent to the Uptown of Murray Hill development. Again, this is a 5.6% increase in residences if we admitted all of those homes into the Special Residential Parking District. Now, in my business, in material science and engineering, that's in the hum and noise, that's in the background. You would have a hard time detecting a 5% change. So we concluded in that study, and we still conclude, that the impact of admitting Uptown residences into Special Residential Parking District Number 3 is quantitatively negligible. You have any questions?
Hi, I'm Jane Ruska, and, did I turn it on too loud? I live at 83 Southgate Avenue, and I've been before the board, the committee, the transportation board, committee, and everything else. And I, unlike my friend John, come to it, I do come to it from an emotional perspective, the issue of parking at Uptown Murray Hill. And we've been told many times that, gee, that's city living, you've got to get used to it. And I want to address that comment just a little bit. I mean, I just moved back here from New York City for 12 and a half years. I know what city living is. But we moved back to Annapolis because it's, it's such a wonderful area, and we moved to the downtown area because it's so incredibly great. We get to walk places. We do each have two parking spaces, and that's really the point. We're not going to be parking on the street all the time. But there are occasions during the day when we need parking for more than two hours, and it's that privilege that we don't seem to have, and it really is unfair. We know that Alderman Budge has tried very hard to make everybody happy, and we appreciate that. But we think that we just have to have that pass so that we can be just like everybody else in our neighborhood. We love Murray Hill, it's just the best group of people ever. They share our park, they walk through, they come over. It's, it's become quite a community. What separates us is this darn situation with just a few people, we think, getting us the passes. But thank you very much, and we appreciate your consideration. Bye.
Thank you for coming out, and thank you from, Mr. Cohen, for coming to my open door. I appreciate it. The next three people signed up to speak are Bonnie Leffert, Terry and Bob Peterson, and Lisa Azzukar. And I apologize if I butcher anyone's name. Having the last name Panalides, I know how that feels.
My name is Bonnie Leffert, and I'm at 229 West Street. That makes me an Uptouner. And our board has already presented, and I just want to support what has been said for us already. But first, I want to say that I do understand the frustration our neighbors in Murray Hill are experiencing. When a city council or a board, such as a zoning board, makes a decision that addresses residents' concerns, after weeks of listening to comments and considering various proposals, there's an implied promise that the city won't change its mind tomorrow. It's the city's job to carefully deliberate and consider the impact on the community before making a decision. That's its responsibility, and once it makes a decision, it's reasonable that residents would expect that the decision is going to be implemented or enforced. So I really do feel for our neighbors, our Murray Hill neighbors who worked so hard years ago to be sure that what they saw as a potential quality-of-life issue was addressed. They may feel betrayed, I think I'd be upset as well. And I also acknowledge the slippery slope argument that we keep hearing, that if the city allows Uptown people to get permits, the city's setting a precedent, and so others will expect the same either now or in the future. And a slippery slope argument is a very legitimate argument that needs to be well-considered when dealing with an issue that potentially changes a law or a policy. I know I have to consider it in my own job. But, but future residential development requirements can be dealt with later. However, having said all that, what I find totally baffling and struggle to understand is the very strong resistance we've experienced to Uptown's request for parking permits, which, as been, as been said all along, seems to be very, very, very minimal impact. The city required, as others have said, the city required the Uptown builder to provide parking, and it did just that. We have two parking spots per home, and we use them. We're not looking to replace those spots with street parking. That means the number of street parking spaces Uptown residents will actually need at any given time is quite small. Spaces may be needed for college kids, for, you know, visitors who may come for a week, for repairman trucks. Some of, some, some of us, like myself, will rarely need that extra spot. So the impact on the parking or the quality of life in Murray Hill will be very, very minimal, and I urge the council members to please keep that in mind when considering our request for permit privileges. Thank you.
Good evening, Bob and Terry Peterson, 85 Southgate Avenue. I just want to say that, you know, we're, we're not new here anymore, we're locals. You know, the people of Uptown Murray Hill contribute to the vibrancy of this city. You know, the people of Uptown Murray Hill contribute to the vibrancy of this city. We support the merchants downtown. We go to the fairs and the festivals. We're going to be supporting the new restaurant that's being built by the Lighthouse Shelter that's across the street from us. We're contributing to the city. We love the city, and we just like to be treated fairly. If you go down Steel Avenue during the day, and I walked down that road, twenty empty spaces. It's not as if somebody's going to have to park two blocks away from their house. There are plenty of spaces available during the day. If I have a visitor during the day, if I have a repairman, and he takes a place in my garage, it seems silly for me to have to move my car after two hours. What do you do? Roll twenty feet forward, roll twenty feet backwards? There's plenty of spaces. The impact on other people will be minimal, and again, we just like to be full participants in the city, get our fair chance to maybe park without getting some tickets.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Asklar. My husband, Henry, is here with me. We reside at thirty-eight Steel Avenue, and I'd like to start by please asking anyone here in the audience this evening who is a resident at Uptown of Murray Hill to please Thank you.
My name's Henry, thirty-eight Steel Avenue. My wife. I just want to say that it's, to us, it's an issue of fairness. We pay the same taxes everybody else pays, and it's a single-family home, and I can't park in front of my own house, as just about all the other residents in Murray Hill get to park in front of their own homes. Regardless of whether or not they have parking off-street or not, they have the right to park in front of their own homes, as long as they buy this parking pass. Our house is at the corner of Steel and Monticello, and I can tell you that the only people who want to park there are the people who are frequenting the businesses on West Street, which we're fine with, but we have, when we did have a parking pass, we saw absolutely no impact. Nobody complained, and all I did was, from time to time, park in front of my own home. We do have children. They drive, and so we do need the ability to have that flexibility to park in front of our own house, as all other Murray Hill residents do. We pay our taxes. We're just looking for equal treatment. Thank you.
Thank you. And I said at the beginning, I saw some people walk in, but I do have an amendment in to give everyone fair treatment in parking. The next three people signed up to speak are Ronald A. Schilinder, Peter Moses, and Sarah Williamson.
Hi, my name is Ron Schneider. Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, to speak, and members of the City Council. I live at Four Murray Avenue. I've lived there for twenty-two years. I'm here to speak not about Uptown Murray Avenue, but about the proposed change in parking on Murray Avenue. There have been a number of surveys that have been presented, and I think you have those in the record. I would contend that all those surveys were unscientifically conducted. They were conducted by individuals who had a bias for a particular decision, either in my view or their view. I think there are contradictory information in those surveys, and I think those surveys were used to change legislation in terms of going forward on parking on Murray Avenue. I think if we're going to make decisions in Murray Hill about parking, we need to do it scientifically. We need to look at the data that SP Parking is starting to gather, and we need to not make it based on the views of a survey that was conducted not scientifically and not objectively. The situation on Murray Avenue has changed dramatically in the twenty-two years I've been there. The revitalization of West Street, the number of events that happen on West Street, what's going on with restaurant revitalization and all that has dramatically changed it. The idea that Upper West Street can change to a more restrictive parking model and leave Lower Murray Avenue as a less restrictive parking model is a really bad idea. I think it was done based on non-objective data, and I think the result will be untenable for those of us who live at the bottom of Murray Avenue. I think that any situation in terms of parking restrictions is based, has to be based on enforcement, and I will tell you that enforcement is spotty. Enforcement happens when people call. It doesn't happen when people don't call. The situation on the bottom part of Murray Avenue is that there are three residences, one, three, and five, who are rental properties. There are ten individuals in those rental properties, most of whom do not have parking permits. And I would say also that the concept of residential parking, most people don't need residential parking during the hours of eight and six, because they're not home. They're at work. They need residential parking when they come home after work, and they need residential parking in the evenings and on weekends, when they're taking their kids to sporting events, when they're doing grocery shopping, and they want to come back and be able to park in front of their own homes. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Hi, good evening. My name is Peter Moses. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for this body for letting me speak here this evening about an obvious problem with parking and residential parking. I don't think there's anyone in this chamber, including the folks that are here tonight, both today and in the past, that would argue the point that parking in Annapolis has been a very terrible and awful problem, especially in the last fifteen years. I'm a lifelong resident of Annapolis. I've been here since nineteen seventy, and I was here when Annapolis implemented the residential parking program. Many of us were here when that happened. We've also seen increases in the number of vehicles, traffic growth, that on West Street, which has pushed itself out, literally, into the streets. I live at twenty-one Water Street. I don't believe I said that. Forgive me. I've been complaining a lot. I think some of you up here know who I am. I'm sure you've read my emails, my certified letters, and so forth and so on. This gentleman right here just said that, just stated a very valuable, important point that I wanted to make, and that is, the time element here is the big problem here. The vast majority of people in Annapolis do work. They may work in Annapolis, they may work in Baltimore, Washington, D.C. They may not be home during the day when parking spaces would be readily available since their vehicle is not on the street. The problem with Murray Hill, and to a greater extent, all of Annapolis, is that it has to do with time. It's a time problem. When should residents be able to park their vehicles on the street? Now, I've made this argument numerous times in private, but this is my first time ever entering these chambers and addressing each of you and others involved here. I find it despicable that a resident has to fight and/or compete with others that don't live here. People shopping, people coming to dinner, people buying a T-shirt, people getting a drink, what have you, particularly in the evening. You know, I work very hard. I sit in traffic for an hour or two. My commute, I come home, and I have the added bonus of having to drive around my particular block looking for a parking space, which is unacceptable in anyone's mind. Now, I do realize that Annapolis must accept the fact that it must evolve, it must grow. That's very, very important for us, each of us. We must all accept that. But we also have to accept the fact that the growth means more cars, more vehicles, literally. Now, I remember meeting with Mr. Richard Newell in reference to the Circulator Program. That was a private meeting in which a lieutenant of the Annapolis City Police Department was involved. There were several people there representing this city. And I remember Mr. Newell addressing the issue of the Circulator Program and the bus and so forth, and how that was supposed to maybe cause parking to be better, more improved, because people would ride a bus, they would park in a parking garage perhaps, but they wouldn't park on the street. The problem is that everything I've seen in the last ten years, just in this last decade, since I started really going full throttle on the parking issue here in residential parking, especially as it relates to where I live, nothing has actually worked. This gentleman is right. Parking enforcement is, it only happens when someone calls. Now, I see parking enforcement out there, and I see them doing their job, not just on my street, but on Lafayette, and all the streets in Annapolis, and also downtown. I know it's a very difficult job. I know it's not easy. We don't need ambassadors as parking enforcement officers. We need officers to go out and actually enforce the laws and the city codes, regardless of what they may be. People that have driveways that are requesting parking permits should be able to get those parking permits. I have no problem with that, because that's not really the problem. The problem is, is people that work in Annapolis who come here, and they park on my street, they park over the two-hour limit, thereby causing a domino effect, so that when I come home, I can't find a parking space, then I have to park on someone else's street, or maybe it's my neighbor. And this happens more often than not. I cannot tell you how many times this has happened. The greater point here that I'm really trying to make is that parking in Annapolis needs to evolve. It needs to be made to a higher standard, because Annapolis is a beautiful city. There's not anyone in this room that can possibly look me in the eye and tell me that Annapolis is not a beautiful city. Everywhere I go, people want to come here and visit because of everything it has to offer. But parking is a very difficult problem. I realize that this body has to deal with this every single day. Everyone has their own agendas, their own issues, and so forth, but one thing we can all agree on is that it needs to evolve. Excuse me. It needs to evolve, and that's very important. Otherwise, we're not going to get anywhere with this. And I'm going to keep making these calls every day to parking enforcement. They're going to show up, they're going to put their car on a computer, giving that vehicle an additional two hours to park on my street, above and beyond the two hours they've already gone, and how is that fair to someone like me that's been sitting in traffic? I come home and I can't find a parking space on my street. Now, the gentleman that manages SP Parking, Jason Proll, has stated to me that, well, you should be able to find a parking space in District Three. Well, I'm not foolish. I realize that District Three, I can park anywhere in District Three, because that's where I live. That's what my parking permit states I can do. But the greater question is, why, if I live at twenty-one Water Street, why do I need to park all the way down Lafayette, or far away from my home, simply because people are abusing the parking privileges that we've established in this city? The sign states, it states from eight AM in the morning until twelve-twelve midnight, and at ten o'clock, it's crazy. You cannot even find a parking space in the evening at all, and that's pretty much in the evenings and on weekends. This gentleman's right. So my point is this, is that, a greater point is, why not just take parking and just start all over again? I know that's a very hefty task for all of you to deal with, but you've got to find a way to create a fair and balanced system. This is not fair or balanced for residents, and I'm speaking more about residents right now. I realize that people that own businesses must have parking for their patrons. I understand that. We all agree on that. But it's not fair to the resident when they cannot find a parking space. The Murray Hill problem speaks to a greater problem, and that is, where do people park when they simply cannot find a parking space? I can drive down Lafayette Avenue, and I know there's plenty of parking down there.
Thank you, sir.
Why do I have to park? Just one more comment, if I may, please.
Sure.
I'll sum it up this way. I'm asking this body to create a fair and balanced system for residents for parking. That's all I'm asking. I think that's very important for you to try to do that before it gets totally out of hand.
I appreciate you coming by, speaking with us this evening.
Thank you.
Yes, I've received your messages, and I understand your frustration, and many people share it with you. I wanted to highlight something that you had mentioned. One of the things about redoing parking, and I've worked closely with Alderman Budge on this, is bringing in the new company, and we've used some technology and innovations to help that. So now, when people park downtown, they can pay with their smartphones. There's other things we're doing that helps. And the one thing we've seen, what you said, is enforcement. You know, when I look at the city budget, pretty much the only two categories of employees that have increased is public safety, police, and fire. I haven't really seen an increase in the other department, with probably the exception of parking enforcement officers, because they basically pay for themselves. We have more officers than before. But we have a reactive, not proactive, one, in the sense of, like, our police department. People go out on a regular basis, they walk around and write tickets, but when you call, it helps. So part of the way we're utilizing technology, and the readers you alluded to, is that they're now taking pictures. So instead of going around and chalking everyone's tire every two hours and coming back, we're implementing technology where they can drive down a street, it'll record everyone's license plate, drive back around again, and if they're over, we'll be able to give them a ticket. I understand your frustration, and it's not perfect, but I want you to know we're working on innovative ways to help address that. But the one thing I would say to people is, please, do call. We will send a parking enforcement officer out there. We don't want you to have to drive around. Residents come first. I've always said that, and we are working hard to address that challenge for you, and I appreciate you coming out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessie Delaney, Sarah Williamson, and Stuart Lehman.
Jessie Dunleavy and Carrie Delaney, so we were a little confused.
Apologize.
I've lived at forty-nine Murray Avenue, and I've lived in my house for forty years. And I sympathize with all of the issues that are on the table, but I can tell you, it used to be worse. When, before we had residential parking and the hospital was down on Franklin Street, there were hundreds of hospital employees that parked throughout the neighborhood. So when the city implemented residential parking, I was grateful, and still am. We have people move into the neighborhood and say, you have to pay fifty-five dollars to park in front of your own house? And I've always said, yes, trust me, it's good. I really remember paying, putting money in a meter on West Street with a baby and my groceries to park and go into my house. So it isn't as bad as it used to be, and I'm grateful for that. I don't think that we should extend the hours, because I agree with doing the analysis that the new company is doing. I have faith that they're taking this seriously and hearing all of the issues. And I do live right almost on the corner of Murray and Colonial, and I have no off-street parking. So I'm satisfied with the way it is and hope that the new company brings further advancements and that we don't jump to extending the hours. And I think the people at Uptown Murray Hill are residents of District Three, residents of Murray Hill, and they should get stickers, and the ability to get stickers. I feel strongly about that. And yes, sometimes I can't park. I got a hundred-dollar parking ticket because I parked on a red line, because I couldn't find a space. But that's one isolated incident. I don't park there anymore, but it's once in a blue moon. I did for years, and then all of a sudden, they got serious about it. So, you know, I've learned. But I do hope that this new company will live up to our expectations and the city's, and that we can all work together and look out for each other. And sometimes, as city dwellers, we simply don't have the ability to park in front of our house. And so I go around the block, and even, you know, after dark. So I don't love that, but it's part of being, we can walk to restaurants, we can walk downtown, we can walk to the city dock. So you take the good with the bad, and it's a minor inconvenience, and that's the way I feel about it, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Sarah Williamson, and I'm a resident of Ten Murray Avenue, and I've lived there for forty-seven years now, so like the previous speaker. I do remember when parking was put in place originally, and it was much worse. So from my perspective, in the lower block of Murray, I'm not in favor of extending the hours. I can almost always park in front of my house, and if not, I can park in close proximity. Last week, I did have to go near the top of the block at one point. But I don't, as a city dweller, really have an expectation of parking immediately in front of my house. I do have one off-street parking space at my disposal, so I'm lucky that way. I believe that it would be really good to wait for data from the parking survey, depending on what kind of data they're gathering. I did a very non-scientific I did a very non-scientific, um, estimate of what the available parking on the lower block of Murray is, and it looks like about 40 spots in the way that our community parks. Not the 22 feet that the parking, um, company is looking at, that they told us they were looking at as a reasonable parking space. We park in a lot less space than that. Most of us have smaller cars, not me, but, um, so, and there's 26 houses on our block, and there are, uh, also, uh, four apartment buildings with two to five apartments in them each. Assuming that each single-family home has two cars and each, um, apartment has perhaps one car, that's up to 65 cars on the street. If people use the 14 driveways that are available, um, that would lower the number, but, uh, some of those driveways could even hold two people, two cars, and a number of our, uh, neighbors actually put both their cars back-to-back and go through the inconvenience of moving their cars in and out. Um, so, when I look at the numbers of cars on the street and residences and potential people to get parking passes, I actually don't think that we're going to solve a problem in terms of a perceived parking shortage on the lower block of Murray Avenue by, um, extending the hours. All that'll happen is the apartment dwellers who don't currently have permits, they will get permits, um, but they'll still be parking and they will still need a place to park on our block. So I think we will cause, uh, uh, we will penalize people who have been there a long time and all of us who live there by making us buy pa- parking passes for our families that come and visit us on the weekends. Um, and particularly, the people who don't have access to a driveway, they're going to be buying even more passes. So, uh, I'm against it. I don't think there's a major parking shortage. It is way better than it was in the hospital days. Even when the hospital was still there with the, with the, um, parking restrictions on it, we still had, um, way less parking than we do currently. Um, there's parking almost all the time on our street, at least one or two available spots. So at least on our block. Um, I do understand that some of the other blocks that are closer to West Street have a bigger issue to deal with, and so I'm not against it being extended in those areas if that's what the majority of those residents want. I just feel like, um, I don't want it imposed upon me and the other residents if there's not a vast majority of us in our block that want it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stuart Lehman. I'm at 19 Murray Avenue. Appreciate the opportunity to present tonight, and I'll keep it brief. Uh, Murray Avenue is unique in the group of, uh, streets that are part of this, uh, legislation. It's a, it's a one-way street. We're really, in the first block where I live, we're really three blocks away from West Street, where it seems that most of the activity, um, outside of our neighborhood, where that parking comes from. Uh, the, the second block going up Murray towards West Street, uh, also one-way, is about two blocks away. And I have seen parts of, uh, of the area there that were closer to West Street where it would be very hard to park. So I can understand that, um, uh, there may be a need for some restrictions in some of the other areas. At present, I haven't had trouble parking, uh, close to my house, um, although, uh, those closer to West Street may have. So I'm talking in favor of Amendment One, which would exclude the first block that's, that's attached to Franklin. And, uh, if at a future time, there're growing pressure, uh, on our block, as shown from parking pressure, then I think we're going to find out quite a bit from this future study that the, the new parking contractor's doing. And, um, would rather wait until then for further regulation. Thank you.
Thank you. The last two people signed up to speak, Martha Liam and Eldray Boggs. And then if anybody else from the public would like to speak, they can do so after them.
Hi, I'm Martha Lehman from 19 Murray Avenue. I would just like to echo, um, a couple of the other speakers, saying that I am not in favor of extending the, um, parking hours in the first block of Murray Avenue. Again, I am in favor of Amendment One. Um, just want, want to just say, um, that really, this is not about enforcement, and I understand that some of our neighbors may have concerns about enforcement, but this particular ordinance does not address enforcement and also the number of cars that are in the rental homes. So although those may be some issues, I don't feel like it's impacting the number of spaces that are available in our block. Again, I have been here before to say that I do not have a problem parking, um, near my house, cannot always park in front of my house, but that's not a problem. Um, I usually am able to get in close proximity to my home. Um, so I just wanted to, um, say that I took a very unscientific study the other night when I was walking from my house down to the Lemongrass to pick up dinner. There was a Saturday night about 8:00, there were 14 available spaces between my house at number 19 and down to the, um, the end of Murray Avenue. So there are, there is parking available. Um, and I understand that there are, sometimes there's difficulties when we have events in town, but overall, um, parking has not been a problem. I've lived in my home for 31 years and have also witnessed the change in the street when the, um, hospital parking came into effect, so. Thank you.
I'm Eldray Boggs, a resident of Southgate Avenue since 1991. I live within the line of sight of the Uptown and Murray Hill residents and can confidently say that the daytime parking is not an issue in the first and second blocks of Southgate Avenue. Allowing the Uptown residents special residential parking privileges in District Three is sensible, fair, and will have no impact on the current parking situation on Southgate Avenue. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Whitney Chellis. I live at 18 Lafayette Avenue, and, um, I am here to speak on O47, and this has been a long time coming. I know that a lot of people have put a lot of energy into this. I am a member of the Ward, the, um, Ward One Residents Association and the Murray Hill Residents Association. I was at a community meeting, um, recently at O'Callaghan's, and it was represented that I was a member of the parking committee, and I am in fact not, so I wanted to, um, state that. Um, uh, I live on the first block of Lafayette, and I would, and I, you know, um, that first block of Lafayette from, uh, West to Shaw, we've counted, there's 28 dwelling units. Uh, 20, um, there's three of them that have, uh, parking, so I didn't count those, but 20, there's 25 dwelling units with no parking, and we have 11 parking spaces because there's parking on one side of the street. Uh, one of those is handicap. So we are highly constrained. We're at the edge of the, um, West Street, and we really need your, um, help here, I think, to move this package of legislation forward. I'm in support of O47, and I think, um, you know, I've heard the community. I'm in support of Amendment One. Um, uh, they have, um, concerns, they don't want the additional restrictions. And I am also in support of Amendment Three. Um, the community has made very good points, and I think we have an opportunity to bring the community together and move the whole package together. Um, I'm not in favor of stalling this, um, any further, um, so I would, I would support those amendments. Um, over the weekend, I was also able to talk to, um, additional residents, and I have, um, two, uh, petitions here. One has four signatures on it, including Carletta Allen, who is my neighbor, Robert Lafferty, Allison Mickle, Claudia Hassan, and Lisa Brown, all signed, uh, the petition, petition to extend the hours on the first block of Lafayette. Um, that's all I have unless anyone has any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Scanlon, and I live at 2 Murray Avenue. I just would like to make one short comment. Uh, I think if you have any kind of a decision to make whether you're going to do Upper Murray with a, with a, a new, uh, new set of rules, but not Lower Murray, Murray, it's, it's just going to be hell to pay. It really is. It just, they're, in a very, very short time, like bees go to honey, these cars are going to go down to Lower Murray. And when you live at the lower part of Murray Avenue, uh, it is there that the, there are 10 apartments, and there's at least 14 cars in those 10 apartments. So you've got a lot to deal with. So if you, if you change Upper Murray and not Lower Murray, it's going to get worse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Mignone. I live at 19 Lafayette Avenue, again, on the first block of Lafayette Avenue from West Street. If you picture in your mind the traffic light at West Street and Lafayette Avenue, you have the 7-Eleven, you have the little brewery across the street, Los Annapolis Hotel on this side of the street, the business, uh, the business says in the brick building that's there, and the residences on the other side of the street, which is the only side of the street that you can park on, is the side with the residences, behind the 7-Eleven. Um, I don't have a dog in the fight for everybody else who have their own issues with parking. I can only say that parking on Lafayette Avenue in that first block is a problem. It's a problem in the daytime sometimes. It's a terrible problem in the evening. I've come home, two weeks ago, I came home at 7:15 in the evening, it's dark, no parking on Lafayette, Shaw, Water Street, Larkin. I had to go to the 7-Eleven and ask if I could park in their parking lot, so I would be at least within a block of where I live. And that's happened probably a half dozen times over the last six or seven months when I've had to park at the 7-Eleven. So whatever the issues are with everybody, I, I appreciate them. I'm just in it for the first block of Lafayette Avenue. I know that District Stru- District Three is one district, but there are different neighborhoods, and the different neighborhoods have different needs. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Carrie Delaney, and I live at 55 Southgate Avenue. Um, I've lived there for 30 years, and I found out quite by accident that there, um, was going to be a change in our, or a possible change in our residential parking. Um, I'm very concerned that we're considering block-by-block changes. I'm not in favor of making any changes, um, to our residential parking. These parking restrictions are necessary in downtown locations, but not in our neighborhood. Murray and Colonial might be crowded at times, but in no way is it necessary to restrict parking seven days a week, 8:00 AM to midnight, seven days a week. Um, I'm not saying that employees of local restaurants never park in the area, they do, and so do people that frequent local restaurants and businesses, but the majority are our neighbors. There is often available parking, maybe not in right of, right in front of someone's home, but parking nonetheless. We are city dwellers, we need to act like it. We do not own the street. It's not our property. I know that we all get a little hot when someone is in what we consider our spot. I too have thought this on occasion. Truth is, we have to check ourselves when we think like this and remember that we live in the city. They are not our spots. Um, I do not believe that we need these changes this time. Sometimes we need to do nothing. Waiting for some true data before we make such a big change might be in order. Maybe we need to give the city's new parking company a chance to enforce what parking restrictions we already have. Let's not change the rules before we, um, without, or enforcing the ones that we already have. I also think that, um, I agree with some people that there are people in our neighborhood that don't get parking stickers, um, especially people that live in apartment buildings and such. If you go to seven days a week, what will happen is those people will have, if they're at work during the day, they don't have, need to park, to get a parking sticker. Saturdays and Sundays, they can park there. But if you change it to seven days a week, those people will have to get stickers. When they get stickers, we will have, still have the same issue that we're here fighting about right now. I don't think it will make a difference. So, um, I am not in favor of changing any of the parking in District Three. I do believe that, um, there are streets that are more difficult than others, and I can understand that, but I've lived at the corner of Southgate and Colonial, between, um, Southgate and Steel Avenue, and every day, there is not one house on that block that faces Colonial. Well, there is one house, excuse me. Um, and there is parking for 15, 20 cars every single day on that block. So, um, I think making changes block by block are wrong, and I don't think it's something we should do. Thank you.
Hi, Lisa Hartman from 221 West Street, Uptown in Murray Hill. And I just wanted to thank the couple people that, um, kind of reached out to us and I, tonight, I really can't say how good that made me feel. It has been a very divisive issue in our community. Um, when I moved here from Hartford County three years ago, just so excited to be, uh, part of this beautiful city. And, you know, for one year, it was all very peaceful and, um, I, you know, I, I really felt we all got along, and then the parking, uh, permits were taken and, um, just so many angry words and angry emails and such going around. It, um, I'm out walking with my dog every day and felt that everybody was my friend and that we were all one community and, you know, then have attended so many of these meetings and, um, heard such divisiveness, and it, it, it was, um, and has been, um, very, very hurtful. Uh, we've got a lot of great people in our community who have been working very, very hard on this parking issue. Just think, if all those resources and time were spent doing something for our city to, to make it, um, an even better place than it is. But, um, you know, instead, it's, you know, been squabbling about parking. I am one of the few people in Uptown in Murray Hill that have really been impacted by this parking situation, as I'm a, a single mother of two adult children that both go to the community college and work at local restaurants here. So with three adults, you've got three cars. Um, and hundreds of dollars in parking fines later because we weren't able to buy, um, passes or at that time, not even a ta- hangtag for the car. So, um, I am one of the few people, as my neighbor has indicated, in most situations in our neighborhood, um, it's either one resident, um, with two parking spots or in some cases, two, but, um, in the very rare case where there are three cars, it, it just made life, um, a little bit challenging for me. So, thank you for giving me the time to talk about it tonight.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Seeing no motion in the chamber, I declare the public hearing on O4716 closed. The council will now take a 10-minute break and reconvene at 9:20. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on our agenda?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. The next item is the last public hearing, R3216, amending parking fines.
First people to sign up to speak, Carl Larkin and Philip Colana. Would you state your name and address for the record, sir?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Carl Larkin. I live at 154 Prince George Street. I'm a member of the Ward One Residents Association Board. As I think most of you most likely know, that's a board consisting of nine, nine board members. We have over 300 members. We are here to unanimously ask that you withdraw Resident, Resolution 3216. Parking in the special residential parking districts has become very attractive for non-residents over a long period of time. We've actually trained those non-residents for several years by lax enforcement before we count SP Plus involved. Before that, it required two passes by a parking enforcement officer on foot until 4:00 PM. They went home at 6:00. So likely parked several hours without being fined. And then we followed that up by introducing SP Plus and giving free, free parking for those, for another six months. So we've really done a job of training non-residents to park in the residential districts. And then for a long period of time, the fine was $20 if they got caught. And then for a long period of time, the fine was twenty dollars if they got caught, same as the daily parking garage rate, so they could park there on the street for the same price. And that was half of, and much of that time, it was half of what the posted rate was in the city code. And with no escalation applied to the repeat offenders, as called for by the city code for that last number of years. So you can see, yes, it has been very attractive for non-residents to park in the residential So no wonder, since SP Plus has started issuing tickets, that you've gotten a lot of complaints from non-residents, and from residents who've become accustomed to parking in the residential districts beyond what the code requires. During the first two weeks, especially during the first two weeks when they first started applying fines to it, it was no longer attractive then for repeat offenders. The Ward One Board, each of the nine members went out and talked with the neighbors, and almost without exception, all of the neighbors support your withdrawal of Resolution 3216. We represent the members of Ward One, and has received a lot of complaints of our own, and for a very long time. Friends no longer visit us at our homes because they can't find parking near our homes. Many in my age group can't walk the distances that are required from where they must park. Neighbors can't sell their homes because buyers can't park near their house. These complaints drive down the home values for all of us, and city taxes that we collect. The dominant issue on this issue, on this resolution, is repeat offenders. It's premature to consider eliminating escalating fines before we have actual experience and specific data on collecting fines from repeat offenders. Two weeks experience, or maybe a month by now, two weeks when the data was first presented, is not a sufficient amount of data to make that judgment. We ask that you revisit this issue next year with actual experience and actual data on what we do with repeat offenders. How many repeat offenders have we had, and has the number of repeat offenders gone up or down because we've actually enforced what's on the city code? If the experience shows a decline in repeat offenders, and revenue from the fines is increased, then we know that the existing escalating fines are working as they intended to. If the experience shows that there's no decline in repeat offenders, we will have added revenue from the repeat offenders, and fines can be used to offset other worthy causes. The Transportation Department universally overruns its budget, must offset some of those expenses, or add services that would accommodate moving people around our city. Or we could have a food for fines program, and it could support that. Or dare I say, we could reduce the taxes. Again, though, I ask that you, Resolution 3216 be withdrawn, and let's let SP Plus, which we're so pleased to have you bring on board, address the issue of how best to accommodate the business needs, but also protect the residents by continuing to enforce what's on our city, in our city code at the moment. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public would like to speak, if there are opportunity? Alderman Budge?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council and the audience, Mr. Larkin and the Wora Board, and the friends and neighbors on TV. The next step in this resolution, actually the next two steps in this resolution, there is a Transportation Board meeting a week from Wednesday. No, excuse me, it's this Wednesday, isn't it? This Wednesday. And then there is a Transportation Committee meeting in these chambers at six-thirty on November fifteenth, where we will look at the data that we've been able to gather together, and we'll get further input from SP Plus, and we'll take it from there. Thank you.
My name is Larry Clausen, I'm on, live at one-sixty Prince George Street, and I'm on the Ward One Residence Association Board of Directors. Regarding the next steps, I guess like the first step, which is the bill that's before you right now, none of our friends and neighbors, nobody that we know in Ward One, and we're talking about residents, understands why we know sooner, at long last, after years and years and years, there's now the possibility and the promise of parking enforcement. Why, after several days with this escalated fines, all of a sudden, there's a resolution to do away with that? And we're at a complete loss to understand why, what the rationale would be. If you pass a law and you don't enforce it, it causes a problem of governance in general, at least that's my philosophical view on things. But we have, as Mr. Larkin said, for years, trained people to park in the residential unmetered parking areas close, talking about close in to the Naval Academy, Main Street, and so forth. The escalating fines are only, only take effect for repeat offenders. If we're not going to escalate the fines, we're saying to people, well, we're not really, once again, we're really not going to enforce it, we're going to make it against the law to park there if you're not a resident for more than two hours, but we're not really going to enforce it. I'm at a complete loss, and everyone I know is at a complete loss, to understand why on earth we would be withdrawing this very important provision, because that is in effect doing away, it's doing away with enforcement in the residential, special residential district. And we don't understand that. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ellie Tierney, and speaking on behalf of being president of the Ward One Residence Association, I wasn't going to speak, I submitted a testimony because I wanted to reinforce what Carl said, but I'm having a real hard time understanding any of what's happened in the last two hours, and a lot of that has to do with my past experience in building buildings. And when you designed a slab, you knew what kind of load it would carry throughout, and you had to do that because you would have to design a slab to carry high-density shelving in one area, or you'd have to carry a MRI in one area, and you would know from doing an analysis of that whole slab what it could withstand. And with that, I will read my testimony, and maybe that will all make sense, and it may be a little boring, but I'm going to read it anyways. Mr. Mayor, in respectful all the persons, as a precursor to this discussion about introducing Resolution R-3216, and to also support Carl, and our wish to the council to wait a year, we wish to ask, what is, what is the current status of the city's comprehensive parking study as requested in the City Dock Master Plan, because there are so many cogs in the wheel here, and one of the things that, one word I didn't hear in the last couple hours are, God forbid, garages. And the whole business model of SP Plus, or at least what we were told, was that they were going to try to relieve the traffic on the street and get people to garages. Again, there's so many cogs in the wheel, and I don't believe, with due respect, that any of you are parking experts, nor am I, nor any of our wonderful residents. We really hired, our tax dollars paid for these professionals to do this study. And let me just list what that study is supposed to do, from pages of the City Dock Master Plan. The inventory of, there needs to be, this is a quote from the City Dock Master Plan, which is approved legislation, "There needs to be a comprehensive parking plan that addresses the current and future parking needs for the area. Before permanently removing ten percent or more of the city-owned parking spaces, or formal or informal loading zone spaces in the City Dock Study area, et cetera, et cetera, the City of Annapolis will develop and present to City Council for approval a parking management plan, which identifies and considers the inventory of parking spaces and loading zones, both within the study area and within walking distance, the parking spaces, loading zones, and parking management practices necessary to support a vibrant economy in the City Dock Study area, specific programs for relocating parking from within the study area to location outside the study area, and strategies for accommodating the distance, the other new locations. The parking relocation programs must meet the demands for success of existing and new businesses, the economic impacts of these relocation programs, the impacts of these relocation programs on parking elsewhere in the city, at the parking facilities and on street in both business and residential areas, alternatives to parking that will help city residents and visitors across City Dock within the need, without the need for a car, the costs and expected benefits of those programs, and the provisions of periodic evaluation of parking supply and demand in the study area, et cetera, et cetera." I don't want to bore you, but what this basically says is that it is a comprehensive plan that needs to be done, and it is also a deliverable in SP Plus's contract. And this is the necessary information from which the secondary, or at least what I consider, or what we consider, secondary considerations, such as fine escalation, should even be considered. And it is very important also, because inevitably, inevitably, Hillman Garage will need to be replaced, and those people will need to go to alternative places to park, and we need to figure that out now. So it's very prudent that SP Plus evaluate optional parking options specifically as pertains to the replacement of Hillman, which is eventually a long-term solution. Therefore, in light of all of that, we ask that this resolution be withdrawn. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on R-3216 closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, that concludes public hearings, and we are at second readers. The first one is on the Economic Development Division, O-3216.
Is there a motion to adopt O-3216 on second reader?
Second.
All right, into discussion, there is one proposed amendment from the rule in city government, and I'll let the sponsor speak to that amendment at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The committee was generally saying that there was one more, we give this department that, so, he had issues, seriously, and they had to amend it, and so, some of the government, development, like, doesn't want you to, so.
Is there a second on the amendment? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to adopt O-3216 as amended on second reader?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt O-3216 on third reader?
So move.
Is there a second? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Panaliti.
Aye.
Alderman Budge.
Aye.
Alderman Peon.
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Philason.
Aye.
Alderman Kirby.
Aye.
Alderman Piper.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, next on second reader is O-3616, having to do with the absentee ballot application ordinance.
Is there a motion to adopt O-3616 on second reader?
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt O-3616 on third reader?
So move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Panaliti.
Aye.
Alderman Budge.
Aye.
Alderman Peon.
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Philason.
Aye.
Alderman Kirby.
Aye.
Alderman Piper.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, next on second reader is O-4116 regarding compostable food waste.
Is there a motion to adopt O-4116 on second reader?
So move.
Okay. All right, for discussion, there is one amendment, it's the Lippman proposed amendment. He's not here to speak to it, but I've gone through it, I'm one of the sponsors, and I think the amendment's fine, but if somebody likes to speak to it...
I'd just say, I told Alderman Lippman I'd be happy to raise this amendment, and this was an outgrowth of, during the public testimony, Anthony Clark from Galway Bay came forward and talked a little bit about these empty permitted food waste program, and was sort of trying to link our efforts to that program. So I think this amendment is sort of born out of those discussions, so it makes sense to me, but I'd be happy to move it.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt O-4116 as amended on second reader?
So move. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt O-4116 on third reader?
So move.
Second. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Panaliti.
Aye.
Alderman Budge.
Aye.
Alderman Peon.
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Philason.
Aye.
Alderman Kirby.
Aye.
Alderman Piper.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Next, Mr. Mayor, is R-1715 regarding the revisions to the personnel rules and regulations.
Is there a motion to withdraw R-1716?
Withdraw?
Yes, withdraw R-1716 on second reader?
Postpone, I thought.
Let the city manager speak to this, was that his request earlier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would suggest, Mr. Mayor and Council, that we withdraw the resolution. Reason being is that we have an internal group that's considering going through the rules and regulations of the personnel system, but more particularly to address the issue of how it should be formatted. It's going to take us some time to do that, and what I have in mind to do is to take a look at several different kinds of formatting that may exist for rules and regulations we may want to adopt, bring that back to the council for approval, and then we can make the rules and regulations fit in that particular format. It's going to take a little bit of time to do that. Right now, we're in the middle of just starting the union negotiations, we have the classic comp study that's just underway now. It will be some time before I think we can get, in all reality, get to this particular issue. So I'm suggesting we withdraw the resolution, let us go back to council with a format, and once we have a format, then we can, in earnest, construct the rules and regulations around the particular format that's selected.
Alderman Arnett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Recovering from my initial shock of withdrawal when I was thinking postponement, I, the only... Recovering from my initial shock of withdrawal when I was thinking postponement, the only reservation I have, and I assume that the city manager will take advantage, there was an awful lot of time expended, not only by the people who did this work, but by the rules and city government, Alderman Finlayson, Pindell Charles, and I. And I hope that wasn't a huge waste of our time, and I would remind all, maybe it's only Sheila and I, this is the second attempt. We had a R. 5209 that went on and on for years and years and was withdrawn, and we have been long in the process of trying to make these very necessary advances and refinements. And I agree with the city manager, we have even more work we're doing, and I think if the end result is a really good set of rules and regulations, then the delay may be necessary. But I just hope the withdrawal doesn't lose all of the good work that has been done in revising this. So having said that, I will move that we withdraw, I hate to say this, R. 1715.
Is there a second? Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you. I too am confused. If we are talking about formatting, I can understand the reason to delay it, but as the Alderman from Ward Ait has said, significant work went into the content. So are we talking content, or are we talking formatting?
We're talking format. If I recall correctly, there was a lot of discussion about adopting a COMAR format.
Oh, what? I'm sorry.
COMAR, Code of Maryland Regulations format. There are other formats that other municipal governments have used for their personnel regulations that I think may even be better than those of us that grew up with Code of Maryland Regulations. In terms of organizing the rules and regulations so with a table of contents, an index, so that they can be readily discerned. And I'm just being realistic, I think. I don't think it's going to be done in 90 days or even 180 days. We keep rolling it, I suppose, but I'm just trying to point out that with everything else we're doing right now, this will not get done in any time soon. So I'm recommending we withdraw, and let's come back to you with a format proposal. I know Mr. Elsens working on a group internally to look at format, come back to you, say, here's the format we think it should work, here's why, and then we'll fit the rules and regulations that you all have gone through line by line by line by line into that particular format that can be used by that average person of employees.
So the work that we did line by line by line, and the work that the then HR department did on this?
Yes, and HR has actually recommended we withdraw at this point, and then let's come back to you. I wouldn't bring that to you without their concurrence.
So in the new document, are we going to see the changes that we made over the last six months of working with this?
Oh, absolutely.
You mentioned that you're in bargaining now. This is something that has been on the table for a long time, not to say that it takes precedence over bargaining, but maybe we have a staffing issue if we're having, we can't get this completed and bargaining at the same time.
Well, it's bargaining, it's the classic comp study that's just beginning. There are more, I think, more priority things to be done in the next six months than formatting the rules and regulations, is my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on our agenda?
Mr. Mayor, from the consent agenda, I believe, is O. 3416, the harbor line itself, Annapolis Yacht Center.
Is there a motion to adopt O. 3416 on second reader?
So moved.
Is there a second? Discussion? Alderman Arnett.
Mr. Mayor, like you, I've received a flurry of last-minute emails expressing mostly confusion, but asking for more time. I feel duty-bound, if my constituents need more time to ask for postponement, I'd like to postpone at least until the next council meeting. There is new information that has come to light, seems like every day, including questions about how the harbor master will enforce the harbor lines, do they actually have the power, and what does enforcement mean, because it's not clear. There are fines, and my Graham is here, and he just relayed this. I don't know whether he could speak right now or not, but...
I would say, you know, I typically yield the counsel mad at courtesy, so if you'd like to postpone, I'll support you in that, and if you'd like to have Graham give the council an update, that's certainly fine. So if you'd comment, state your name and address for the record, Graham.
This is Graham Castendike, 14B3, President's Point Drive, Annapolis 21403. First of all, Mr. Mayor, thank you for letting me do this out of the order. I want to compliment you and the city staff. I have been working diligently trying to get to the bottom of who has enforcement rights over our harbor line and our boats in the harbor. And what we found at last meeting, it didn't seem like anybody had it. So I know your staff has had several meetings, and I congratulate them for jumping right on this. And what I have found to date is so far is, since we have a new harbor master, and she after that comes from the DNR, they've had a meeting, and they have agreed in terms to be able to take the responsibility for enforcing vessels outside the harbor line. However, they do not have any legislative power or any fining ability to enforce it. All they can basically do now is to ask a boat to be removed from a marina. I'm not sure they can have it towed, I'm not sure they can do anything else but ask. So one thing this council needs to do, because you can make all the laws and say you can't go out the harbor line, and the city code clearly says you cannot put anything outside the harbor line, but nobody has been enforcing it for so many years that people are violating it all over the place, and so you need to give somebody the power to be able to assist and calls, send somebody to the site, and make a fine or whatever that can be enforced by the city of law. The next issue I found out is who has the enforcement of violations of marinas or resident owners putting things out of the harbor line. I was first regarded to the port wardens, but I went through their 35 pages, and they clearly do not, they are there to report on proposed projects that will be built within side of the harbor line, but they have no authority outside the harbor line. So I finally went down, some of your employees called me today, Mike and Pete, and we were talking about this issue, and it is, we've come to discover, I think, city planning, if I have that right, is under the rules of looking at who has the authority to enforce violations, although they don't have any authority to deal with violations. So the council needs to address, at some time sooner than later, an authoritative person that has the ability to enforce harbor line violations. I don't want you to have to go back and legislate, everybody has done in the past, but if there's a concern to safety and human nature, which this narrowing of the harbor line does, then it needs to be enforced. And I said to you, and Mr. Anderson, and I said, why, he said, he would not violate the harbor line, but, this is the key thing he said to you all, but only if the council enforces every other violation on the harbor. So I don't know if that's fair, because if I went and started with a city traffic judge and say, my ticket's no good, because you have to find every speeder in Annapolis, and make them live out before you can make me pay for my ticket. So we don't want to get into this match. The key thing is to make sure that your planning department, your port wardens are instructed that nothing can be built without the proper setbacks, and that is in your code, 151880. And I just want to read you one short statement of 151580, and if you all enforce your own codes, it will never have a factor in my mind, but it's, just give me a second.
While you're looking for that, Mr. Mayor, I see these as very important issues that are not directly deranged to the harbor line. My reason for asking for postponement is I think that a lot of confusion is out there, and it needs to be straightened out, and I hope we can do it in two weeks. I do agree with Graham that we have an awful lot of other business that we need to clean up, and I'm hoping that the Office of Law can help us work with Mr. Gutwold and help us get that cleared up. There's been a lot of revelations, but again, in the interest of allowing my constituents and others to have access to information and get things cleared up, we're just talking about two weeks or thereabouts, and if we need more time, we'll take more time, but I ask for the postponement.
I support you in that, and as they say, there's always time to do the job over and never time to do it right, so I think we should wait to make sure, and Graham, I want to thank you for the work, and the city staff as well. You talked about enforcing the harbor line and everything else. There's probably nothing more important to the city and the maritime ministry than that. And when we hired Beth Mock as our harbor master, her extensive experience with natural resources, enforcing things in Williams Creek, she's probably the most qualified person that knows the rules and regulations of that. There are some gaps in the city code in terms of enforcement and penalties, and we're going to work internally to fix all those, but you can rest assured, we're going to make sure that they're enforced. And nobody will build into the waterway, because that just would be detrimental going forward, but you can finish, sir.
I just, three sentences, and this is the key to the whole enforcement issue. Under your code 158080, harbor line setbacks, all piers, T-heads, L-heads, mooring piles, mooring buoys, and anxious must be set back from the harbor line in appropriate distance to ensure that no moored vessel or permanent or temporary obstruction extends channel worth beyond the harbor line. So the laws of enforcement are there, and all we need is you all to show us a way to enforce them and make sure that they're not violated. Thank you, council members, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Has been a motion to postpone? Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All standing?
This is Stuart Date, sir.
I believe you said the next council meeting.
Yeah, okay. Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, next item is another second reader that was taken off the consent agenda, O. 4316, issuance of general obligation refunding bond.
Is there a motion to adopt O. 4316 on second reader?
So moved.
Is there a second? This was pulled off for discussion. Alderman Arnett?
Mayor, the only reason that I asked for this to be removed is because we're talking about a substantial amount of money here, an important issue, and I apologize for keeping people here late that didn't have to be here, but I just thought that we should have an opportunity for discussion and then have an explicit vote on this and the other bond issuance. I personally am supporting it, but I think some things are just too big to be on the consent calendar.
Understand, Alderman Pan?
Let me make sure I have this right. I mean, this is a, in effect, refinancing of bonds that are already in existence.
Correct. That is the case, correct. So I guess if you would like to do a very brief presentation?
If he wants.
If he wants, yeah.
You don't have to.
Doesn't have to.
Please, Doc.
We're probably paying you by the hour, so Bruce, please make it very quickly. Let's try to do this in under five minutes.
What does this have to do with Murray Hill?
Thank you, and I will try to make this quick. To my left is Bob Dorian, he's our bond counsel. But O. 4316 is a refinancing of current outstanding debt. It's not extending the payment period. What we're trying to do is capture savings in the interest rate that will provide a gross savings of almost 1.9 million dollars, which has a net present value of the cash flow of 1.4 million dollars. So it's a substantial savings relative to the bond.
And the amount of money we're talking about in the legislation is 64 million dollars, but the amount of money that we're actually looking to refund is... We are anticipating that the, it says, it authorizes up to 64 million dollars if included a number of different alternatives and contingencies, the current expectation is that this will be in the way of that.
Correct.
If it were to go up more, it's a 64 million, you have to say a whole lot.
Correct. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt O. 4316 on third reader?
So moved.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Panaliti.
Aye.
Alderman Budge.
Aye.
Alderman Pan.
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Kirby.
Aye.
Alderman Piper.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our last item?
Mr. Mayor, the corresponding, no, I'm sorry, the next matter, it was also taken from the consent judgment, consent calendar, O. 4416, issuance of general obligation bonds.
Is there a motion to adopt O. 4416 on second reader?
So moved.
Any discussion?
This is just the funding for the capital improvement program.
Correct. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt O. 4416 on third reader?
So moved.
Second. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Panaliti.
Aye.
Alderman Budge.
Yes.
Alderman Pan.
No.
Alderman Pindell Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Kirby.
Aye.
Alderman Piper.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
I believe we're at adjournment, Mr. Mayor.
Entertaining motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Alderman Kirby?
Yeah. Just before we adjourn, Mr. Mayor, I just think it's rather important that I let you know, well, I know you probably do know, that we had another shooting this weekend in Robinwood. Five weapons were found there. If my recollection is right, that's a total of about 15 weapons found in this city, just in this month of October. At, I guess at some point, I guess what I'm wanting to know is, what are we doing? How far are we tracing these weapons? Do we know how they're getting here, and why are they so plentiful? And I don't, I'd like to see those answers at some point. I don't know where it's going to come from. We've definitely got to do something different. It's just, it's a proliferation of guns in our communities, in the city, and it's beginning to alarm me. I mean, I can't think of a time in my life where we went into any community and found five weapons, five, at any one given time. I just can't, I'll be 63 next month, but I certainly can't think of it. So I just didn't want to leave here. I just want that to stay on in front by now. Thanks.
Alderman Pan?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Oh, you guys nuts.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting adjourned.